Looks like it's six thirty, so it's time to start the meeting. So at this point in time, let's see if I do this. All right, open the meeting, uh, we'll start with. Max Lewis.
Gladly. The United States of America.
Alright. Welcome those in the video world, my name's Neil Turner, I'm the vice chair of the Rochester School Board. And at this point in time, we're gonna start with our roll call, Suzie?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Michael? I'm Neil, I'm present, and Thomas has been excused tonight. And with that, um, do we have any public comment at this time, Justin?
Nobody's in the room currently, and there is no public comment.
No public comment to start our meeting, alright, well, thank you very much. Uh, next thing up is going to be our consent agenda. You will have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alright, Grant first, and do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Alright, on to our next part. We are going to go into reports tonight, and we have our student representative, Grace here tonight.
Thank you, we're having prom May fourth up at Olympia Ballroom. Our Latinos Unidos Club will be hosting a multicultural festival on April twenty-sixth up at the Rochester High School. Our sports med went to state for the first time this month, FBLA went to state today. Theater will be performing the Out of Towners with the RHS band on May seventeenth and eighteenth at seven PM. And our jazz music festival is at April twenty-seventh. That's as far as I know it.
Thank you, so April twenty-seventh, uh, that's gonna be where?
Um. Middle school.
At the middle school, jazz, cool, excellent. Okay. Thank you Grace, anybody else have any questions for Grace? Thank you, alright, next we have our special education report.
It's me.
Presented by Laura.
I just sit down and talk, or you know, they want me to stand up, come on.
You can do whatever you want, I will let you.
I'm gonna stand here and look super official, so. Uh, good evening, my name is, um, Mrs. Daley, and I'm here today to talk to you about special education, how do I do, looking official?
Very good.
Good, thank you, okay, so I wanna talk to you tonight just about some of the things that are happening in, in, in special ed. Uh, we are seeing an increase in numbers and an increase in needs and programs, so I'm just gonna share a little bit of, um, that information with you. Um, I'm gonna, I wanna start with early learning, early learning is our transitional kindergarten, which we've had for the last three years. That's for students that are, have turned four by August thirty-first, um, and are under five by August thirty-first, so it's that four-year-old range. Um, and the other class we have is our early intervention program, which is our, uh, our program for students with IEPs, that early intervention program does not have students without IEPs. Um, at this time, someday I would like it too, but TK has been a great step in that direction because TK has um, about a third of the students have IEPs, this year it's a little bit less, um, which was kind of a interesting dynamic in numbers, because the next group coming up there are a lot more, but this year we have, um, you can skip to the next slide. Uh, this year we have nine students with IEPs in our transitional kindergarten, so we have two classes of eighteen. Typically, we have about six in each class, this year we have, um, what, six in one class and three in the other class, our numbers are a little lower. But that's our opportunity for our four-year-olds to get to, get to be with their general ed peers and be more prepared for kindergarten. Um, the, our really unique situation is REIP, which is our early Rochester Early Intervention Program, historically, that's been our three and four-year-olds, but with TK, the majority of the four-year-olds are in TK. Um, typically, we've had, I'm gonna show you a little more statistic around this, but typically, we've had considerably less students than what you're seeing here, right now, we have thirty-three students. Um, and that's in, we have a morning class of four mornings and an afternoon class, four afternoons. And so right now, three of them are served in other locations, one in a preschool in Tenine One, um, uh, here, the other two in town, at different preschools, but thirty of them are in the class. So that means the morning class has eighteen and the afternoon class has twelve. So we're talking eighteen, like, just turned three in the class, it is the sweetest, most fun, busiest class you will ever see. Um, so you can keep going, please. So this gives you a little bit of, um, the history in early learning. Um, the first three you have, I'm sorry, am I, in your way, no, oh, you can look over there. The first three, you'll see the numbers are the same, because overall, our, our, our RRP were all of our early learning students, so eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-twenty-one. Um, you can see the number of students in REIP was, it was everybody, so twenty-six down to twenty-one, down to nineteen. And then, the next year, you'll see that blue line is our overall number, is just jumping up. Um, you'll, the yellow line, that year twenty-one, twenty-two, we had one TK class, so only six students in there, and then it's gone up, and that one on the far right is where we're projected to start next school year. So we already have, um, eleven out of twelve of our students with IEPs that'll be in TK. Already pretty much said, not a hundred percent, I'd say about eighty percent. We have eleven of them set, because there's a process to go through to make sure that they are appropriately placed in TK. And then, outside of that, uh, we're gonna, we have probably about thirty-five in, uh, the early Rochester Early Intervention Program. So we've only had one teacher the last couple of years since we started TK. Um, this year, she's been an amazing trooper, having thirty kids in her program. But next year, we're gonna split it up into two teachers. And when you look, one of the things that occurs in TK, um, in early learning, I apologize, is kids come in all the time. Because as kids are qualifying for special education, they start in program, like, whenever they qualify. They start right away, and when you have our, our littles, you might have families who find out from their pediatrician, or just themselves are feeling like, you know, my, my kiddo needs some extra support, so we may have students come in and start looking at, oh. Uh, look at that, I'm a slide ahead, so you might have medical professionals say, hey, you wanna, might look into special education, or other preschools, like, we've had referrals from Head Start, or, um, other preschools in the area that says, hey, this, this child might need some extra support. So that's one of the ways we have kids come in pretty regularly in that way. Um, we also have students that are in, uh, Birth the Three program, which is called Part C of Special Education, and that's served in our region by parent-to-parent. There was a while that we, as a school district, served the Birth the Three. Uh, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, around in that time. Um, and then it moved to parent-to-parent, but when students are in parent-to-parent, they have what's called an IFSP, um, Individual Ladies, this Family Service Plan, and then those students um, are evaluated to determine whether or not they qualify for Part B or three-year-old to twenty-one special education. So, we have many students that are in the Birth the Three program, and if they come to us, we have a very tight timeline. They need to be evaluated and in program by the time they turn, turn three, by their birthday, they need to be able to walk in the door. So, because of that, would you mind going back a slide, please? Um, at that bottom, that bottom sentence there, we typically add thirty to fifty percent more students during the year. So preschool is really different than other grades, I mean, kindergarten, you kinda start the year that way. Most grades, you know who's coming, preschool, we have no idea, so we, so this change from going to about twenty-ish kids to almost fifty kids has been a really significant change for us, and so trying to figure out, is this trend going to continue, is it not going to continue? You know, we haven't knocked on people's doors and said, hey, are you gonna have more babies soon, you know, you, I mean, you don't know, because we're looking at the really littles.
Yeah.
So trying to figure that out, um, but I really need to say for our preschool team, they've worked incredibly hard, their numbers are high, and they continue to serve these kiddos in incredible ways. Um, a little bit later, I'm gonna talk about the services for preschool kiddos, but we'll just keep going for now. I just took a couple pictures of the preschool. Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you want questions now, you want with you?
I was just gonna do, show this slide, and then I was gonna ask questions about preschool, but go ahead and ask your question, because it's just cute kids.
Oh, okay. Um, no, I might have forgotten, oh, you're adding a teacher, so does that mean there's gonna be like two classes in the morning and two in the afternoon, or?
Yes, yes, that's what it'll be, and I'm not gonna go deep into funding, Jill can save me if I, um, say something wrong. But preschool, special education funding is different than for students aged five to twenty-one. So preschool special education funding can, is more likely to financially sustain itself versus five-year-old to twenty-one. So when we're looking at a, adding a second teacher, Jill and I have talked about it, and of course, you know, I have asked Jill, is what the conversation is, Jill, can we do this? Um, with this number of students, and so we should have getting a second teacher should be sustained by the number of students we'll have. Now, the hard part of that is we have I think it's twelve students that are like in process of being evaluated, between now and September. We don't know if those twelve are gonna qualify, or they're not gonna qualify, or what's gonna happen, so it's, you're, there, you're a little bit trying to play the odds with it, but we have enough right now that we will be able to sustain two teachers and maybe trying to figure out what to do, maybe year next year, when we have more. So these are some students in the preschool class, I wanna, um, draw your attention, even though the kiddos on both sides are quite adorable, the picture in the middle is, um, one of the things that you will see at every desk in our preschool class, all visuals for students, um, you see a little schedule there. The preschool, if you have not visited, visited it, is pretty amazing the way it is set up for each student to be successful with all of the accommodations and modifications they need in that room. And, any other questions about preschool? TK.
Question, are, how are the kids transported, do they, individual parents, or do we have bus service?
We do have bus service, yeah, they, they all ride a small bus, and then, and the bus uh, goes into the back of the primary school, the preschools are in portals in the back. And so the bus goes right there, and they can walk out and walk right up into the ramp into the, into the preschool classroom. Yeah, yes. Okay, so, one of the things, I, I wanted to bring this up just briefly, special education numbers over time, because, um, the legislature over the last couple of years has bumped up the percentage of students with IEPs that we will get funding for. So it used to be thirteen point seven percent, so we would only get dollars per student up to thirteen point seven percent of our total population, regardless of how many students with IEPs we have. Then it went up to, um, fifteen, what is it now, fifteen point two, yeah, fifteen, now it's up to fifteen point two, um, which did help us a little bit. Um, and then next year, it's gonna go up to over sixteen. We are not there, so that change won't help us much. Um, we want to be really purposeful in who we qualify for special education. So that particular change from the legislature will help some districts, it won't really help us. I'm still thrilled for the districts that will help, I think it's great, but I just wanted you to be aware, because you may have seen that change, that we have stayed fairly stead, steady in that fifteen to sixteen range, twenty-one, twenty-two was a little low, that was another COVID time, it was, you know, everything was a little unique number-wise there, the rest of it stayed pretty steady. Any questions on that? Nope, okay, this is, this is where I wanted to talk a little bit about the change and what we're seeing with our students in the preschool. So I would say, um, over time, um, when we typically had students in the preschool who are maybe non-verbal, or who are struggling with, you know, they, they don't know shapes or colors or things like that. And we're getting more and more kiddos in our preschool who are not able to physically do things, uh, maybe physically, you know, get in on, on and off the bus, or walk around by themselves, we have little little kiddos that have these cute little walkers, um, and we have kiddos that use strollers and all kinds of different things. We have students whose physical fine motor types of skills are really delayed. Um, and we have a lot of students who, across the district, who have speech and language, um, disabilities. And a lot of theory about, is that COVID-related, you know, when you think about like these three and four-year-olds, early on in their lives, they weren't seeing mal movement on the adults around them, there are lots of theories. Regardless, we're at a huge increase in all three of these areas, our communication, occupational therapy, and physical therapy. Uh, our percentages are way up. Typical years for communication, students who qualify for speech and language, a hundred fifty, a hundred fifty-five kids. This year, we're at a hundred seventy-eight. Um, occupational therapist, typically fifty, fifty-five. Um, and we have one full-time occupational therapist, um, currently we're at seventy. And physical therapist, typically fifteen, twenty, we're at twenty-eight, so if you see, we have some pretty large increases that have been over the last year and a half.
Are you still in the preschool, or this is all?
This is the whole district increase, but a good portion of it is in the preschool. So, um, I would say like physical therapist, therapy, we probably have typically a couple kids that qualify in preschool, and now we're, I think we have like ten that qualify in the preschool, so just big jumps. Okay, any questions on that?
Yes, one question, so what about the little guys that are just, um, do not speak English at all?
So, where do they go? So, i- if we have students, we do have students in the preschool that are, um, um, multi-language learners. Um, we are really careful when we evaluate them for special education to make sure it's not a language barrier, that it's a disability, so we do some testing. At that age, they're not reading anyway, but we do some testing to determine their skills. Um, so at the three-year-old level, if they qualify with a disability, we'd still serve them in a preschool. But at the four-year-old level, they can oftentimes be in, uh, transitional kindergarten. And that's one of, one of our screen, screeners for transitional kindergarten, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna keep going, now we're in total, just overall, special education out of preschool, but I just wanted to talk through um, a few things, you may have seen, uh, you, some of you have seen similar data to what you're seeing here before. But I think it's always important to keep in mind, as a state, um, Inclusionary Practice Project is getting a higher percentage of our students in a general education setting. And so when people think of special ed, the question comes up, are students in a self-contained classroom? And the answer is typically no. So what we do is we look at the least restrictive environment for a student, and really, we're looking at having students in general ed to the maximum extent possible, that's the, what the WAC says. Um, and so thinking about how we can help students to be successful in general ed with these supports that they need. So this just shows overall, in our district, um, age, uh, grades K through twelve, where students are falling, so you'll see this here, um, about sixty-two percent of our students are in the general ed class eighty to a hundred percent of the time. About thirty percent are in gen ed about half the time, and about six percent are in gen ed less than forty percent of the time. So one of the things you'll see is we've worked hard over time to change that level three, so we have more students in gen ed more of the time, change that level two, same reason, more students in gen ed more of the time. One of the things we're finding this year, which relates to something I talked about way back with the Karu training, is we have more students who have more significant behavior types of needs, who need more time and more of a self-contained setting. So that's been, that's, that's been why you see that number going up a little bit, that, to six percent. Okay, and this is per building, same information, just broken down for building. Primary school, that is where the, um, most significant behavior concerns are occurring, we're having students who are struggling to regulate. So you see that level three is higher. But also kudos to the primary school, because seventy-five, seventy-six percent of the students are in gen ed most of the time. And this is seventy-six percent of students with IEPs. For the high school, um, Jennifer and I were talking about this earlier, if they're in special ed for more than one class, they move to that middle section. So when you're talking periods, you know, then it, it changes quickly, so that LRE changes. Any questions on that? Alright, so, just thinking about what we have as a district, um, and this is, these are the types of things, because special ed is, um, not a cheap part of our, our district budget, um, we go into the red every year, and I want you to be able to, to understand the why of it a little bit, and to know what's happening in the world of special education, and, and so that's, I just think it's important for you to have to, to see this and just to know what we're doing. Um, so when we think about the continuum of programs for students in our district, um, we have students that are in what's called life skills in some buildings, learning center in another, in other buildings, where they spend some time in, in that self-contained setting, sometimes it's just to help them regulate, sometimes it's to, because that's really what they need for their academics. Um, the primary school and the middle school have some specific classes around behavior support. Um, all of the classes have resource, which is, uh, or all of the buildings have resource, which is like, I'm gonna go in and get my reading support in a specialized setting. Primary and elementary, almost all of the students get it in general ed as well. Middle school, high school, some of them do, some of them only get in a resource setting. Any questions on that? Okay, I'm gonna go waste, switch gears here a little bit, so, um, this is something that I've tried to share with you for the last number of years. Should've started with the high school, because the m- middle school data is better, we should've um, started with the data that's not as good, but, um, something to think about is, are students in a, with IEPs, are they participating in sports and activities in the district? So the middle school, I didn't put this percentage down, but, uh, I think it's fifteen or sixteen percent of the students in the middle school have IEPs. And so you can look at this, about almost half of the students with IEPs are in activities or sports. Uh, in sports, uh, almost ten percent of the students in sports have IEPs. Okay, but sixteen percent of the population is, has an IEP, so we're not there yet. Um, with activities, slightly higher, we're not there yet, but we're continuing to try, we're continuing to try and hand out the flyers. These are all the things you can participate in, w- we want you to participate, um, but the numbers are growing slightly. And, high school, um, sports is a low number. Uh, last year, for those of you that were here last year, you had asked me, like, to kind of break it down, because initially, like, there were seventy-seven students, or twenty-eight students in sports. Well, that could be, we wanted to make sure, well, what if it's, um, you know, Grant Rodhevers in like six sports, and so is, does he count as six students as ones? Or one student, so that's why I wanted to make sure to break that down, so you could see what that's in sports, twenty-two percent of students with IEPs are in sports, so you can see that it wasn't just four grants, there were, you know, different students as well. Um, activities, activities are part, a lot of activities are, um, during the school day, they have, um, how often, can you tell me, how often is your, um, club day?
Club day, it's every other Thursday.
Every other Thursday, so because of that, all students with IEPs are participating in some type of club. So we can celebrate that part, because the high school is about twelve point eight percent special ed. So.
How about say it again?
Twelve point eight percent special ed at the high school. Yeah, that's all, yep.
On the sports, if they're not able to play the sport, but they're a manager, for example, or something like that, do they count as being part of the sports, or?
Yes. Yeah, so, and that's, I can think of a, one particular example of a student that that happened with. Um, and he is very excited to be a part of the team, and we'll go in a class and talk about his participation, and it's really, it's a good thing for him, because um, he didn't make the team, but he's still a part of that community, so. Okay, and last is, there's just a picture from a couple of the buildings of some of our students, and, uh, learning in different ways that happen, okay, the one in the middle, they're in line to leave the room, but I got there too late. So, um, I could pretend they're talking with each other as part of a learning activity, but they're getting there anyway. So, uh, that's all I have, um, I just wanted to give you an overview of what's happening in the world of special education. Uh, as always, it's, I'm very passionate about the work, and I love to talk about it all the time. So don't hesitate if you ever have questions, or if you ever have ideas, or anything that can help us do the best for our kids. Yeah.
One more, um, we've spoken over the years about, I think it's integrated sports, or where you've got the mixture, is that
My gosh!
Something that?
I should've talked about that today. Yes.
We're working on it.
Yes, so at the primary school, Nicole Credit, who's our new assistant principal, has started, uh, integrated support, uh, sports. Um, for a second, are you a part of that? Are you, are you out there during that time?
I've seen it, yes.
Okay. So they have started some sports activities, um, with Unified Sports. So Unified Sports is helping provide some, um, materials, they've done soccer and some different things like that. And so students with IEPs and other students are participating during recess, and this, um, Integrated Sports were starting at the primary school, because this was kind of a passion area for Nicole, and then she ended up at the primary school, so she started it there. And we have our transition kiddos from the high school that come down and help on Mondays with that, and so the kiddos, we have kiddo, in general ed kiddos and special ed, all out there together, we have students participating that don't typically participate with others in, at recess, and so, um, Nicole has shared this out with Ad Council, and I have every expectation that we'll be, we'll be moving to other buildings next year, because the other principals are, and building administrators are like, can we do that? So, I, yes.
That's us, that's great.
I should've talked about that, I think, Michael for asking, and it's, that is Nicole Current, she, she has done an amazing job with it, I can't take credit for anything other than saying, hey, we thought about doing this, and she just rounded. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Well, I got one.
Okay.
Um, it said that, uh, the cost, it, it brings the district into the wreck, we lose money with having a special ed. How is that broken down as far as funding, because I know a lot of the, uh, requirements of special ed are federal. And then, we also have, you said we, we see some money from the state, I know it's been a position that the schools have been like, hey, we need more funding for special ed, and for buses, transportation, things that are not being funded fully. And, uh, I think the state has a responsibility to make sure they are, but how does that break down? Um, do, do you know?
So, like, how much we're using outside of special education?
Well, our local tax levy dollars are being spent on things that should be federally and state-funded.
Well, and federal funding, we get a small side, set, slice, the majority of our funding is state funding, but we're one point five to, one point five to two million over budget.
Depends on who shows up tomorrow.
Yeah.
What we have to provide to them.
Yeah, so, we're typically around that range, you know, one point five to two million over, working really hard to keep it sounds terrible, but we're working really hard to not be more over budget than that, you know, but, um, and when we see, like Jill says, depends on who shows up to, the increase in needs with occupational therapy and speech therapy and those kinds of things, um, that becomes more people. And so, trying to navigate how that works while providing good programs for all of our students, because that's critical, we, we need to do that, um, but here's my advocacy for funding, is, you know, moving the percentage up is great, but the cost multiplier, you know, how much we're getting for a student needs to go up, because the complexity of the needs of our students, having a student who struggles with reading, kind of thing of the past. And I can say, when I started ten years ago, there were lots of groups of, you know, reading groups or math groups, and now the needs are so much more complex, almost across the board.
There's like, need a lot more students out of district. There's like, need a lot more students out of districts. We have more kids that need one-on-ones, we have more kids who are under seventeen programs. Which are more costly, which is where the cost model, multiplier.
And then with the expectations of these, the younger kiddos that are coming in and in free K right now, expectations, they're going to be filling seats in school too.
Yes, with some very significant needs.
Do you attribute a lot of this to um the COVID, the lockdown stuff that we went through, the behavioral issues that we're seeing at the elementary school?
I, I have a lot of theories. You know, I don't know what what the real answer is. Um, I will, I do think that that has definitely impacted the students' speech because of having the masks and um not being able to communicate. The rest of it, I have a lot of theories, but I, I don't, I don't have the answer.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Really appreciate all the work you're doing, and it's important, you know, the learning loss, we're trying to get it addressed and and uh, thank you.
Yeah, and I just, uh, thank you to the staff that works really hard with kiddos who have some complex needs and they care about them and they do the best.
Thank you. All right, and next, we are
I'm gonna start sneaking pictures of cute kids and exactly. So our April F T E was two thousand thirteen. Um, so we're still trending about fifty-five kids over budget. Running start, we had thirty-eight students, so we're running start only and eighty-nine total participants. Um, heart moved up to forty-five students. Our spread count increased to three hundred and forty-five, and there were eight kids eligible, eligible to be counted for the dropout reenforcement program. Um, the next one's just a visual of a trend, um, just more evidence of it's hard to to guess what's coming the next year, when this is what you're looking at, and nothing's the same from year to year. Um, so we're still really using a crystal ball to determine enrollment. Um, at the end of March, the fiscal year is fifty-eight point three-three percent of the year complete. Our revenues were at fifty-three point one-two, which is normal. Catch up in April when we get our next levy payment. And our expenditures are right at fifty-eight point three-two. People are staying within their budget. Um, the next one is the offhand summary, and this one shows the transfer that was approved out of capital projects into general fund. Um, you'll see that in a March, we did have four thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars, but that would not have been enough for Jody to pay accounts payable come April fifth. Um, so that's why the loan was needed. Uh, we should be able to pay the loan back about um, May seventh, the treasurer will tell us uh the interest and we'll be able to transfer it back out. So it was just a short-term loan.
Is that from the state office?
No, it's from us. So we actually borrowed from our own capital projects fund and gave it to our general funds. And then we'll be able to just give it back. So it's all still Rochester School District money. Um, we just have to pay ourselves interest.
Any questions? Yes.
Seniors, that number looks, looks lower than what we've had recently. Under a hundred? Am I reading that right?
Um, but that number does not include our full-time running starts.
Oh, so that'd be more.
Because, yeah, we don't get to count any F T E for them. So of the, I mean, there are thirty-eight that are running start only. Um, and that headcount on the far right is a hundred and twenty-six. I will tell you that number includes uh heart on this report. Um, so the high school will be expected to be right around a hundred. Still smaller than, yeah, it's a smaller class.
And then heart, gotta be besting at the seams at the.
Yes, and but uh, another thing that's in hurt, if somebody can remind me the name of it, a new program that we have Rattle Light, it was approved um early in the fall. Those kids are counted in heart numbers as well, but I believe it's a smaller number in Rattle Light, three. Yep, so that is still a higher number for her. A larger number for her. It's been a long day.
Any other questions, board members?
Right. Thank you, Jill. Another good step, this point down, it is a super.
All right, so just a few things to share tonight. Uh, last time we met on April tenth was the same day as our kindergarten information fair. And there was a fabulous turnout at the fair, um, higher turnout than many of the previous years. There was seventy families, at least seventy families that were there. The kids were able to walk around, do a scavenger hunt with their families. They went to many different rooms. They had the opportunity to talk with different teachers, different staff, a counselor. Our uh behavior analyst was there. Uh, the kids were given activities that they could do at home to help them prepare for kindergarten. They were able to walk into the bathrooms and learn how to use the bathroom in the school and wash their hands. Um, it just, it was a wonderful experience for the kids. And the really nice thing is that, you know, we're starting to build that preparedness for kindergarten. The kids were getting comfortable in their building. Afterwards, there was a dual-language information night, so the families who were interested in that program were able to stay and learn a little bit more about that, and um, they one of our teachers actually taught a lesson in Spanish, and the kids were able to participate in that, so a good night for our, for our soon-to-be kindergarteners. Next, we have, we've got a lot of schools that are really getting parents and families back in our buildings. That's a big focus this year, and this is a V I P breakfast that took place at at G M E S. They, they had the breakfast prior to school starting. I think they, they sat down for breakfast at about twenty to nine. And um, the kids were able to invite whoever they thought deserved to come to them, to breakfast with them for the V I P breakfast. We had some kids that invited their brother. We had others have invited grandparents and neighbors and parents and um you know, who, who the, who was important to these kids? And we had a hundred and fifty students who had somebody that they brought in and had breakfast with, the V I P breakfast, so. Good, good activity and a great way to have our family come in. Um, once again, on Earth Day on Monday, they all of our K five students took a tree home, thanked, thanks to Meister's uh family tree farms. Um, over a thousand students or a thousand trees were shared with our kids. This is the third year of the event, and you can see a lot of happy faces there. We had pictures from the primary school, but the kids were very excited to to get their tree, and hopefully they've taken them home and put them in the ground, because they're gonna get some rain in the next few days, so it'd be a good time to put them in there and let them grow. It was also bus driver appreciation uh day on Monday. This week is blending together, Monday. So uh, we made sure our bus drivers were thanked, um, especially thanks to Candace Robinson, who went out and put together a, a big uh, celebration for our bus drivers. But we do have thirty-three bus drivers this year. We have thirty routes that they're covering. Our most senior driver this year is Gail Allen. She's been driving for thirty-eight years. And our newest driver, Sean Wilcox, just began on April seventeen, twenty twenty-four, but they're a big part of our team. Getting our kids to school every day is really important. I watched a bus driver today. Um, we had two kids running down the street, the bus, they obviously had missed their bus, and you know, the bus driver took the time to tell them how to cross the street safely, so they could get to them and get back on the bus, so they they really work hard to get our kids to school safe every day. And it's a tough job. I don't know that I'd wanna be a bus driver, and I'm so thankful that we have people who do wanna do it. So, good day to ta- make sure we thank them. And I said Candace. Um, this was, you received an email on, this was Monday too, right? So we did have a fishing attempt on Monday, or actually Sunday night, Monday. I'll let Justin speak to this one a little bit.
We had a fishing attempt on Monday. Um, actually, it's, it's, it started, it started Sunday, when there was a, there was a, a, a fishing or spear attempt uh uh, with our staff at, at the high school. Um, unfortunately, um, even though I got an email out to not answer that, someone did, and so uh, we ended up, every uh, every student school district ended up getting an email, trying to uh get more information. Uh, the good news, it was a very unsophisticated attempt, so even clicking on the link didn't download any, any malware or viruses or anything, they were, they were just attempting to willing to type in information and submit a Google form with, with other information. So it's really low level. Uh, we were able to take care of uh it, it pretty quick. Uh, within ten, fifteen minutes of the emails going out to students, we, we, we had the report and we were able to, to jump in and take care of things um within a half an hour, and then within two hours, we had logged into every K two student and deleted the, the emails. Um, uh, district office came together and logged into all those student emails. Uh, it took care of it. So, uh, big teaching opportunity for our, for our staff, once, once again, as uh digital security and, and whatnot is a is a big deal, and uh, uh, we uh, in the, in the coming month or so, we will be we will be moving to two-form authentication uh for email. Um, and so that, that is, uh, that is coming, uh, so that, that will be another training opportunity for us with our staff, so. As we structure all that out.
Um, strategic plan, so April tenth, two weeks ago, we talked about the plan. We are modifying the schedule a little bit. We were gonna have our first meeting the first week of April or May, and we're not done, ready for that, so our first meeting is gonna be the fifteenth, and then I will have a complete, I'll, I'll have the completed updated schedule to you soon. Uh, but we're gonna stretch it out a little bit more. And if you do know anybody who you would like to have on this, or recommend participate on the strategic plan committee, make sure you let me know. We'll send them an email personally, but we're gonna put an invite out to the entire community. The next thing is the bond and next steps. We're um, getting ready to send out a survey, that'll be going out the first full week of May to our community. And also going to work on pulling together focus groups to bring focus our community, some of our community members together and ask them questions and have some tabletop discussions and then um work to figure out where, where, why they are, you know, making the decisions they are about the bond, whether it's a, a pro or a um, a con, and learn more about that, so we can figure out what our next steps are in moving forward and when to put it on the ballot. Um, but really working to get people that you know, don't hear from a lot to those focus groups. So if you have ideas there of people that I can reach out to and talk to, to invite to the, be a part of the focus group, please let me know. I see doing more than one of admitted plural up there, so I think we'll do more than one and try and get a number of people in. Our events, so just like Gray said, um, we've got a jazz night on Saturday night, the twenty-seventh there. It's um, the middle school and the high school band will be there. I think tonight, O'Band's gonna be there as well. It's the jazz bands of all three. It's uh spaghetti dinner, five dollars for a spaghetti dinner, so a great way to feed, feed a family, if you wanna come in and have dinner, and then I think there's a silent auction that's gonna go on, and then of course, lots of great music. So that's Saturday night. Friday night before that is a multicultural festival. And if you weren't able to attend that last year, this is the second annual. And it's a wonderful night. It's another way to come and have dinner, because there will be some food representative of the different cultures in our area, and that starts at six o'clock, and dinner is free for that, right Maggie?
For the first hundred people.
For the first one hundred people, there you go.
That's usually enough to cover.
Yes. Yeah, uh, and then dual-language night is on May seventh at five thirty. And that's a family night, so those families who are currently in the program will be joining together to come together and learn about what their kids are doing in class and how they can support them and uh, participate some activities around the, the dual-language program. We have a work session on May eighth, and we are gonna be talking to people who submitted their applications to use the original gym. So that's on the agenda. Uh, we have both the, the historical use of the gym, they've uh, they're coming, I think, at six thirty, and then the Boys and Girls Club will be here at seven fifteen. To talk to. And our graduation, school board meeting on the twenty-third of May, which is a Thursday, I keep, just reminding everybody, that's that unusual one because of the E S D award sesh- ceremony up there. And then we have a heart graduation on six thirty on June seventh, and high school graduation on the ninth. The year is rolling on. Lots of good stuff going on.
Do you have any questions for Jennifer? And moving on to our next bit of business, we will start entering into our new business. Okay, and we have a first reading of policies.
These are the policies that we, we reviewed on April tenth. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them, or I can review them real quick if you'd like, or we can, you spent a good time studying them on the tenth, so up to you.
These are just the first readings. We're not voting on anything tonight.
Right, this is primarily breaking out an old policy into three policies.
Correct.
Separate the, the sections from nutrition to recess and wellness.
Exactly. It used to be all involved in one, and it's divided into three.
Yep.
And it clearly states that recess is now thirty minutes for all K, K five students. That's the big change, but we're already doing that with our kids.
Next, we have our twenty-four, twenty-five school board meeting schedule. We looked at also at our last board work session. Need to approve this?
This does need to be approved, yep.
Does need to be approved. All right, so do I have a motion to approve the uh school board meeting scheduled for twenty-four, twenty-five?
So moved.
And do you have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? New discussion? All in favor? Opposed? None? Motion passes. Moving on to the next, our K five reading curriculum, adoption and purchase. Is this something we need to?
This is something we need to approve?
So at the, at the last board work session, we talked extensively about uh the ninety-five percent group, uh core program materials and the uh view fly materials for the foundational E L A. Uh, and so we're looking for we're recommending the approval of those materials to purchase and move forward with.
Thank you, Justin. All right, so it's time to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
First, you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes.
K five teacher, very happy.
Cheers across.
Yeah, believe us, there are cheers across the land.
Next on our new business is uh online curriculum, adoption and purchase.
This is the online curri- curriculum that's used for heart and for our credit retrieval students at the high school, and Maggie's here to share you share with you a little bit more about this. This is, we currently have Apex, and it is expiring, and so we need to renew, and we're gonna make some changes, so we have an opportunity here.
Totally. So we have, you know, we do, so we have currently uh utilized A- Apex for a number of years, since I've been here at least, so ten years. Uh, so we did feel that especially after uh, uh, remote learning, a lot of different companies have upgraded and have added some different features to online curriculum, so it was time for us to, to look at what we currently have, what are the pros and cons to that, and um if we wanted to continue to stay with Apex, or if there's a different program out there that meets our needs better. So that's essentially what uh, what we did. Uh, just as, as a reminder, we use our online curriculum for a variety of reasons. Heart is a primary user of that, because most of their curriculum, unless they have courses that are taught in person, which is very few. But they do have a few, um. which is very few, but they do have a few. It is their primary curriculum. Yeah, Hart is the way that it's designed. It is an online program for most of the credits that they receive. So students will use it two ways. One, for their original credit. First time that they've ever maybe encountered a world history or a physics class or whatever. So it could be an original credit. But also, as we know, the kids that come to Hart may have had a previous attempts at a credit and received, not passed them in the original at, at the high school. And so they can come in with a credit retrieval, which is a slightly modified version of the original course. At the high school, the primary purpose of using online curriculum at the high school is for credit retrieval. This is for an opportunity for kids to get a second go at a credit that they have not passed previously. There are some special circumstances where that is their original credit. It does not happen as, it, it is not the first go, go ahead for that, but it does happen. And so there are some types of special circumstances where a student will use that for an, an original credit. So, and again, Apex is what we've had for a long time. So this is kind of the process that we went through as looking at our current curriculum and then starting to look at different new ones. So there's several people that were involved in this, Justin, myself, Kevin Theonis, principal of the high school, and then Kevin Wilson, principal at Hart. In October, September, October, we kind of conducted a needs assessment. We looked at what were the pros and cons? What were we hoping? That any program that we offered, what were going to be the highest needs and the highest priorities for us? So I listed there the three priorities that came, came back as the highest of any program that we look through. Built in interventions, universal designs and differentiated instructions. So does that online program have some built in supports for kiddos that are struggling? Is it user friendly for students? Is it engaging? Is it hard for students to kind of manipulate through the program? And then the last side is that backside management. So is, is it so great that we're going to have to hire somebody to figure out how to run the program because it's so, it's so, it's so arduous. The other thing is some autonomy with class, class, class course management. As you know, especially in Hart. The whole point of that is to tailor courses and curriculum to the students' individual needs. So we wanted to make sure whatever program we went through gave the school the, the autonomy and gave the district the autonomy to tailor the course based on our standards on what we are saying, our credit requirement types of things, not what a company wants to do. So those were our priorities. So we started looking around for different programs. Obviously Apex was our current program. We looked at two other programs as well. And we just kind of received some presentations, some information from each of those companies as far as what they currently had and what they would be able to offer our programs, knowing we were looking for both an original credit program, but it could also need the credit retrieval that we wanted as well. We determined we, through, through that process, we had a couple, I keep looking at Justin because he was part of this. Through that process, we determined that there was one program that we really wanted to pilot and test out with kids and get some kid feedback on because they are going to be the main users of this program. And so in that program was Edgenuity. So Kevin Wilson did a small pilot with his students, a small group of students at Hart. So he picked a range of students that kids that loved Apex and thought this was the greatest thing ever, and kids that just were really burnt out or tired of Apex. So he really tried to make a mix of students based on, on how successful they were in our current program. So he, he did that January, February, and then we came back together in March and we looked at kind of what the pros and cons of, of that kind of that small pilot and then also the pros and cons of the other programs that we looked into. And based on that, we made a determination that we wanted to go with Edgenuity. So the recommendation is that we will adopt Edgenuity, just to give you kind of an idea that is they offer about four hundred courses in that program, core elective world history, AP CTE courses. There is autonomy on how to create a course and, or how to create a course and of a teacher of record. That's a typo. I apologize. So when we talk about that, we can hire Edgenuity teachers to be the teacher of record. A perfect example of this is world language. If a student's at a heart, we don't have a teacher of record in order to provide them adequate instruction in their world language. So we would then access Edgenuity's teacher of record to allow that student to provide that. That would, they would be meeting virtually. That teacher would take on the grading responsibilities, take on the additional support responsibilities of that course. So there's that option. And then I always say there's like our old school option, which is we provide a teacher of record and we just use our online platform to provide the curriculum and the assessment and all those good things. I just gave you, I'm not going to read that list, but I did give you a list of just some of the supports that, that are offered. It was one of the, the key priorities that we wanted to look at when looking at a different model. And so I wanted just at least to highlight those because it was a priority of the group as we were looking. So with that, we are still in the process of negotiating what, what that, that, that cost would look like as far as are we, you know, moving away from Apex and into Edgenuity. So as we're still going back and forth about that, what you'll see there is a recommendation that we would be able to purchase Edgenuity. And so the number is high because again, we're, we're kind of negotiating on a one or a two year contract based on that. So that's where you'll see that approval is up to fifty thousand dollars using grant funds. So that's important to know that this isn't a basic ed expense. This is a grant funded expense. But I'll answer any questions.
Do you have a chance to talk to any other schools on using this?
So Kevin Wilson did. And so Kevin Wilson is the assistant, or this is the principal at Hart, or the alternative. And so he really spoke to most alternative high schools in the area. And then when he went to Wawa? Walla, which is the alternative ed kind of state conference. He really asked around and said, what are you using? What are you using? And by far, this, if it wasn't Apex, it was this. So that's why we felt when we made the decision about what to do a test, a test pilot, we already knew what Apex could do and the pros and cons of that. So that's what led us, a big factor of what led us to want to do a test pilot with with Edgenuity.
So if you use Apex again, would it have been updated or was it just the same program?
It's the same program that we've, that we've had. It has updated since I, since I have been here. But the updates are pretty rudimentary, pretty archaic as, as a system. It doesn't give the the interface is just not as, as pretty as some of the others.
And I think as, as a learner, our, our learners now learn in three minute segments. Right? I mean, that's, that's how kids are, Apex, Apex is a good twenty minutes, a half hour read and do this and do that. And they're not going to change away from that model. Whereas one of the things that we see with Edgenuity, one of the things that kids really enjoyed is that things are chunked for them. So they can go through a three minute piece. They can either read or watch a video or do both things. And we, we had some kiddos that really struggled with Apex because Apex, if you are not reading at a ninth or tenth grade level, you're really, really going to struggle on Apex. And this is something that we've seen over time. And one of the reasons why freshmen typically have not been real successful at art is because of the, the amount of reading that needs to be done. So the, and, and so those are some of the differentiated things we're looking for. Because kids, kids can learn using video. If someone's reading the text to you and, and I can still pick up the content and do that, but that chunking is, is a really, really big issue because, you know, every YouTube video over three minutes, it was never watched. Right? Except for us in the room that really have to watch it to learn something. But kids don't watch anything down three minutes.
Again, this, I see this support for students with special needs. How much of this stuff is AI? Or is this, we have a teacher of record or record?
So typically, when, when a student enters an online course, one of two things should happen is one, the, the online provider provides a teacher of record. So like, for example, in that world language, that is a teacher that that company has employed that is licensed in the, or certified in the state of Washington and to oversee that course, to grade that course, to provide support for that course, for that student in there. If that teacher of record is not provided by the company, the program allows us to provide our own teacher of record. And that is where we have a teacher that would provide the grading, the oversight and the support at heart. That tends to be the teachers that are there. If a student has an I E P, Kevin
Andrew Kernit.
And Andy Kernit is the one that goes and provides the specialized instruction for students with I E Ps that are at heart.
They're still getting that one on one personal reading the lips and having that conversation. Thank you. Any other questions, board members?
Need
Maggie and I are working them over on the price.
Kind of one time purchase or is it every year?
We're, we're working them over on the price.
It is not fifty thousand to do one year. That is why a multi, we're, we're shooting for a multi year contract.
Does it, do we get a better price? Like, we saw like a, like a ten year lease or do they only do it like every, every three years?
Yeah, we, we won't get ten years out of that. I'll, I'll try and, I'll tell them, my board chair said I need ten years for that price.
I'll be coming back. What's the difference?
I just want to make sure we get the bit back for our buck for our students and our parents and our taxpayers and our community. And if this is what you guys say we need to have, absolutely, but we need to lock in and get a better deal, get a better deal for our people.
Yes, I, I totally agree. I think that, that's why it's a vague approval because and we were not ready to ask them for the official quote.
I got it, Neil. Don't worry.
Yeah, yeah, this man.
And this is grant funded, right?
Yes.
That's a plus too. Okay. All right. Any other questions, board members? All right. Well, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the online R S D curriculum for Hart? And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Two Z seconds. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion passes. All right. Next on our new business list today is off campus overnight trip request.
This is the overnight trip approval for the robotics team to go to Atlanta, Georgia on June twenty ninth.
Awesome.
Compete national competition.
Oh, did they raise the money yet?
They are, yes, they raised a lot of money. And actually, I correct myself. It's June twenty third that they go. And then they return on the twenty ninth. But yes, they have raised their money and
They left over a lot.
They had some leftover, but they have been working hard. That group of kids is
Tell me about it.
How many kids are going?
They take four.
Four and how many adults?
Two adults. Or actually, just one adult's going this year. Paul's going with them.
All boys.
No parents or anything?
All boys.
We, I don't think there's any parents going. Sometimes there is a parent that travels along, but not as a chaperone, not as an official chaperone.
Wouldn't doubt that a couple might just go down for fun.
Yes.
They don't want official duties.
Grace, are you going? Did your team make it?
No, I did not.
But you medaled, but you didn't.
No, I placed third.
You placed third, but you don't get to go to nationals. But you did place third, so there's nothing to laugh at.
Oh, congratulations. I mean, it's amazing what you kids have all been doing. All right. Okay, do I have a motion to approve? I'm going to say yes. So I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. Good luck. Amazing what these kids have done with, with the loss that we had last year. This is so, so cool. All right. At this time, we are back for public comment at the end of our meeting.
There's no one.
We have no one online, no one in the hallway?
We're all good.
I miss the good old days when we used to have some people show up and have comments. All right. And with that, I'm going to call it during the meeting.